We all about ready? Thanks, thanks for sharing with me through the delay. George, do I need to countdown?
Uh, yeah.
Alright, great. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Good evening, it is 7:04 PM on Monday, February 7th, 2022, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. Before we begin, I have a brief statement about the events of last week. The events of last week were heartbreaking for Richfield as a district and as a community. One of our students, Jamari Rice, was shot and killed at his new school. Two other students were also injured. Jamari was only 15 years old. In the aftermath, the outpouring of support for our students, staff, and community was the sort of beautiful kindness that you never hope to need but appreciate when it is shown. Thank you to those from near and far who helped our students and families process their grief. Six days later is where we are now, the trauma, concern, and anger are still here. While much of the world seems to have moved its attention to the next completely avoidable tragedy that still also affects us, we're here with heavy hearts from last week. Our task going forward is to ensure that our students, staff, and families have what they need to feel supported and safe, so we can get back to the work of preparing our students for a bright future. We did hear a lot this week about the many positive attributes Jamari had as a friend and a teammate. One way we can honor Jamari will be to see the inherent goodness in everyone we work with, to let them know that we see it and that we believe in them. That will be one way we can work through this together. So with that, we will move on to our meeting. We will have the superintendent and Ms. Brackey will give a statement during the superintendent's review. Good evening again. Present in the boardroom tonight, we have board members Rachel Banks-Cupcho, Crystal Brackey, Eric Carter, Paula Cole, Allegra Smieszek, and I am board chair, Tim Paulus. We are joined this evening by our student representatives, Elsie Cruz-Para, Helen Donbrock, and Corinna Jones. Superintendent Janowski joins us at the table. There are other members of the district's staff and administrative team who are present and will be presenting throughout the meeting. We are joined at the table by Board Secretary Cassandra Quam. Thank you to all of us who are, all of you who are joining us live in the boardroom, and also to those who are watching via the livestream or on delay on YouTube. Thank you for being with us. With that, our first item of business this evening is to approve the agenda before us.
I'll move the agenda as presented.
I did hear Mr. Carter's faint whisper first. I know.
I am happy to second.
Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. Carter and a second by Ms. Smieszek. Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. The chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. We move now to information and proposals, non-action items, and first up is the superintendent update. Superintendent Janowski?
So as you all know, our community was deeply impacted last week by the tragic incident outside the South Education Center, which resulted in the death of Jamari Rice, a former high school student and the critical injury of a second South Education Center student. It's not lost on me that the shooting death of Jamari Rice took place on the first day of Black History Month, a time where we should be recognizing and honoring the extensive contributions Black Americans have made to science, politics, philosophy, the arts, and every other aspect of our world today. Instead, the news was once again filled with headlines about yet another young Black man who was shot and killed in our country. I want to express to you not just my sadness over our horrible loss, but also my anger. I'm angry that gun violence is so rampant in our culture. I'm angry that a young man full of potential is now dead. And I'm angry that I, along with parents everywhere, have to worry about the safety of our children when they're out in the world, because after incidences like this, our sense of safety in the world is shaken. We've always focused on equity in Richfield Public Schools, advocating for and elevating policies and programs to help ensure all of our students gain the skills and confidence they need to reach their dreams. I'm making a commitment to hear to you tonight that we are redoubling our efforts. Our students need and deserve a bright future, all of our students, something only possible with a strong educational foundation. We'll also be working with our Safe and Supportive Schools Committee to ensure students and staff feel safe and are able to focus on learning. And together with students, families, and staff, we'll make sure that Richfield Public Schools can provide a place where every individual can learn, grow, and excel. Then I'll turn things over to Crystal Brackey, who is our board member, but she is also the Chair of Intermediate 287, our partner district.
Yes. So I think many people know that I have been on the Intermediate District 287 School Board for four years now and became Chair last month. And so in my capacity as board chair, I spent time at the South Education Center last week in the aftermath of just this horrific tragedy. I have listened to and spoken with people in the Richfield and 287 communities who have been deeply impacted by the gun violence and loss of life that took place outside one of our schools last week. I also have had the opportunity to talk with Governor Walz and Commissioner of Education Mueller to advocate for our young people and for our community to get the support that they and we deserve, not just because of what happened on Tuesday, but in our education system and society more broadly. My heart aches for the victims and their families, especially for Jamari's family. To lose a child so young and at the place he came to learn is devastating. I also want to acknowledge and support the students and staff at the South Education Center across both districts. The shooting, the lockdown, and the evacuation were especially traumatic for so many of the students with disabilities and unique needs who attend school there and for the staff who love and teach them every day. I've been struck by the strength and care of our Richfield and 287 communities this week, but I also see and feel the pain, the grief, and the loss. If you are here tonight or if you are watching online, I want you to know that I see you, I hear you, and I support you. It shouldn't be this way. Change and healing can happen, and it must, but it will take time. And our responsibility, especially as board members, is to be in this with you and for you in the days, weeks, and months to come.
Thank you, Ms. Brackey. And we'll pause for a moment here and awkward transition over to the rest of our mundane meeting, although deep appreciation for those who are presenting. I didn't mean it like that, but back to our usual meeting, including presentations from some wonderful groups.
Yes, so we will have presentations for you today from Centennial, from our Indian Education Program, and then also from our Safe Routes to School presentation. So I'm going to welcome up Principal Mahoney to talk about One School, One Book. And so Principal Mahoney and the Centennial team are going to step up to the microphone. We'll bring some extra chairs up. And we'll transition into talking about jaunty hats in elementary schools.
Good evening. I'm calling Mahoney, the principal at Centennial Elementary, and it's nice to be here because we have some exciting news to share with all of you about what's going on at Centennial. And I want to introduce Patty Fenelon, our literacy coach, and Betsy Matus. She's actually the family literacy specialist for the district, so she works with every elementary school, and she's joined us tonight to tell us about this program. And I just want to quickly say that we, Patty came to me early last fall with this idea, and she explained it to me, and it didn't take much. I said, yes, it's fabulous, let's go with it. So I'm gonna let them talk about the parts that they are doing, and then we'll finish up. Go ahead, Patty.
The program is called One School, One Book. I had a chance to partake in One School, One Book back when I taught at Sheridan, and so we thought that we would try this again this year. We picked the text, The Miraculous Journey of Edward Tulane, by Kate DiCamillo. For a couple of reasons, we wanted a text that was available both in English and Spanish, and Kate DiCamillo is a local author. As literacy coach, my focus is working with teachers, getting them to work, learn about, and use evidence-based practices that have been proven to have a positive impact on literacy development and achievement. This is not an exhaustive list of those practices, but working with One School, One Book, and reading Edward Tulane as a school community has let us delve into the practices that are up here on the board. One of the things that I did, oh, there's our jaunty hat. It was kind of staff development for teachers, but it's also for the children. Lots and lots of vocabulary words, and so I put together over 40 slides, vocabulary slides, for the teachers to use if they choose to. This is based on the work of Isabel Beck, where you have the word and how it's used in the story, and then a student-friendly definition, so this is just an example. We did have a jaunty hat day last Friday, and it was a lot of fun.
So my job is to connect the things that we do at home, or do at school, connect it to home, and then bring that homework back to school again. So this program is a really great opportunity because it's very structured. Every day, every classroom is reading a certain part of the book, so everybody's kind of on the same timeline. They do have it at home as well. So I created some slides that will go home with families to use if they choose. Nothing is an obligation to them, it's just a suggestion. For, as we heard earlier, it is not always easy to get your kids to talk about what they're doing in school. I personally get a lot of grunts in response, so this gives opportunities for questions to ask. As for literacy, I am a big believer in the deep dive. The more that children have context for what they're reading, the more that they're going to relate to the material, and the more it's going to make sense to them. It's going to build their vocabulary and build their, just concept of their world. So while this is a bunch of YouTube clips, it is a very curated amount of YouTube clips that relates to the themes of the books. For instance, Edward goes on his journey, and he always looks to the stars to kind of center him and ground him in what he's doing. So we have clips about constellations, how they are formed, what they look like, what the night sky looks like in the city versus in the country, because Edward goes to a lot of different places and sees stars differently. And then they do have the option to learn how to make their own star projector at home. So I really look at it as giving parents the tools to have the conversations in a non, without the pressure of we're having a learning moment. This is a time just to be together and exist together without it feeling like we're going to sit down and do flashcards. There's also an invitation that goes along with this to send materials back that relate to the book. I think on the next slide you'll see we created a journal.
If you just, it should go to the next slide.
So on the next slide, my son and I had a lot of fun creating these posters that represent Edward's different personas he takes on during his journey. So those are posted in our main hallway. The invitation for families is to send in pictures that can go on our journey wall that will include things like their jaunty hats, or if they have a special toy, because Edward was a beloved China doll, if they have a special toy, if their family has a special toy, anything that they connect to and relate to the book, to send it in and we'll post it up. We also have our beautiful stuffed bunny, Edward, that is going to visit classrooms in his different clothing and kind of encourage and create that excitement. He will even be on at parent pickup. So, parents can see it too. Again, it's making that connection back and forth from school. And then one of the coolest parts, I think, is we were able to collaborate with food services, too. There's a very intense moment in the book where Edward eats pancakes with his little boy, so we are going to have a pancake lunch at Neil's Diner as well. And then the theme day is our jaunty hat day, and then mismatch bandana day. He does wear bandana pants at one point, but I am not a seamstress, so we'll get there. And then dress-up day, because his attire is very important to him. So it's about creating excitement and just giving that give and take.
So I asked the students how they liked it. This is, they're a little hard to hear, but it's kind of fun, so go ahead. Can we try it one more time? Sure.
What I like about the book is the author is probably gonna make a really good movie for someone who has many more details. They all get the same book, and we all get to read at the same pace. That's what I like.
So she said we all get the same book, and we all read at the same pace, and the wonderful thing is they all get to keep the book as well. So we, with the grant money through the, the.
CLSC.
Yeah, I know that part. Know what it stands for?
Comprehensive.
Literacy.
Leadership.
Yeah. Grant that we received here, we are able to buy those books and give them away to the students to keep. So it's really, it's been exciting. We've received nothing but positive feedback from students and families and staff. That's, that's our presentation. One book, we're doing it for the rest of the month, so it's a, it's a month-long program, and we're really excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll look around the room, and I'll start with the left side and ask, Ms. Brackey, do you have questions or comments?
Just say thank you for this little burst of joy. I appreciate it, and I'm grateful for it, especially the videos of seeing our kids talk about a book that they're just having fun with, so thank you.
Ms. Cole?
I'd like to thank you for a new word that I learned today. I'm gonna try to use it in a sentence. Not tonight, I'm not ready. I need more time. I just wanna, like you said, Crystal, if there was a night to have this presentation to reenact some joy and hope, tonight was it. So, thank you, and I want to say also that I want to commend you, because I was at the Blizzard Book something last Friday with my toddler and my husband, and we were able to see your view for family integration of the work. My daughter made a puppet, my husband made a puppet, and for the first time, my five-year-old sat down this weekend to read the book to her dolls, which she had never done before. And I think it's because she feels that now we get it, like what is she doing? Because we heard the book, we were there, and then she just now plays with the two puppets all the time. So it just really, as a former teacher, I can, I know the value of that, and I'm so glad that our children and their families are also being exposed to this, you know, really enriching and engaging and inclusive experience into the fun world of literacy. So thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Cole. Ms. Smieszek, questions or comments?
I agree with Paula and Crystal, it was just wonderful, and I think I especially loved just the depth in the school, like the nutrition services got on board, that's such a neat idea, to really integrate the menus with books and just make it a really fun and deeply engaging thing for the whole school. Well done.
Ms. Banks-Cupcho, questions, comments?
Well, like everyone else, my heart is smiling tonight, so thank you for that. My question is, is this something that will be done, like, just a couple times a year? Or what is, what does the grant program look like longer term?
Well, we, we would hope to continue to do this each year. We weren't sure last fall when we started planning how successful we could be, but I think that there's, we're doing a lot with this book, and we could, we could even do more. We really could. So we'll do as much as we can, because we think it's a great program, and really, really enjoying it, so.
And we did receive a three-year grant from the state, and it is ideally renewable for an additional three, and we are in either, and time flies with COVID, either year two or, it is year, I'm seeing twos and threes, but I'm gonna go with Ms. Fenlon and say, we are in the second year of the grant, and so we have one more officially, and then it is likely renewable. And what they have informed us is, is as long as we continue to meet the expectations, it is likely renewed for an additional three after that.
Cool, thank you.
Just to add, it is something that we could definitely do for my work, because I do work in all the schools. It's something that can be done on a lower scale for every school. It's really, the hardest part is getting a book in everybody's hand, because that is a huge cost, but there are ways that we can do it with ebooks, or just creating that sense, like with the puppets, of really simple things to make literature come alive to kids, to make that connection home to parents, that it doesn't have to feel so hard and so guilt-inducing. It can be fun. Even if your child struggles with reading, this can still be fun, and there's a solid basis that you can learn from just enjoying your child, so.
Mr. Carter, questions or comments?
Of course. My first important question, kind of attached to what Allegra was saying, is what are the dates of the other two days? I mean, maybe I missed.
In particular, the pancake lunch.
Well, no, no. No, he's trying. I was more worried about the mismatch bandana and the dress-up day.
Those are coming soon.
We're calling the bandana day the mismatch day, and that's this coming Friday. And then next week, we have conferences, so we're not going to be around, but the following Friday is dress-up day.
Fridays. I was like gonna say, you know, as a board, right, and showing support, mismatch bandana day, it sounds like a great day for us to participate in. Right? I mean, Tim wants our bandana. Then I guess my next question is, you know, from an age group, and maybe I missed that, what, what grade is this? Is it all grades?
Yeah, it's all grades, it's the entire school.
Okay. The reason I was asking is like, kind of back to the question about longevity and whatnot, is, you know, do you have this or another plan to kind of, kind of do this if they move through grades? I just, I think, you know, it's like bringing it alive, and like, how do you kind of continue it through grades as they progress off? It just seems like a really neat idea, you know, just to get the kids engaged.
Well, and I want to say that the teachers in each classroom and, and in their grade levels look.
Well, and I want to say that the teachers in each classroom and, and in their grade levels look at books, you know, read books and do units together on books and bring them alive this way. This is unique because it's the whole school with one book. So that, that's the difference. But we're doing that work every day.
I think it's awesome. So thank you.
Thank you.
Elsie, do you have questions or comments?
I had no comments. I just want to, oh, no questions, I mean. I just want to thank you for the presentation and I really enjoyed the picture of the little bunny with the hat. I used to also do that when we read some books at RDLS. And then I thought they were like the actual character and I would play with them like, my mom would say like, what are you doing? But yeah, so thank you.
Karina, do you have questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you for the presentation and thank you for bringing this back because I remember doing it with Ms. Fenland in kindergarten. So it was really fun. So I'm glad that it's back. Thank you so much.
Helen, do you have questions or comments?
Um, yeah. So no questions, but it seems to be a very well appreciated program. It seems like the kids really enjoy it. And yeah, I guess that's all good. So thank you.
All right. Yeah, I think every group could use a jaunty hat day or similar. So, so thank you very much. I have nothing else to add. Appreciate it.
Thank you, team from Centennial. We are going to bring up Ms. Sarah Jespersen for a presentation and update on our American Indian Education Program. So Sarah, take it away.
That does it? It doesn't control the slides though? Or this doesn't control the slides?
No.
It doesn't.
Sorry. Oh, I thought you had a nifty trick for me.
I think you just made a really good invention happen though.
All right. I'm Sarah Jespersen. I'm the American Indian Education Coordinator for Richfield Public Schools. I'm here tonight to give our annual presentation to the school board. Normally I have some parent committee members with me, but tonight I am the only one. The parent committee is very involved with the Indian education planning for both the state and federal plans. The APAC, as we call them, is composed of parents or guardians of American Indian or Alaskan Native students that are attending Richfield Public Schools. And this group of parents meets with me throughout the school year and they serve in an advisory role for the American Indian Education Program as well, as well as helping plan and hold family events. The APAC also has to sign off on all of our federal and state Indian education grants. So our chairperson is Lisa Turgeon, who couldn't make it tonight. We also have our vice or co-chair, which is Becca Clays. And then we have two members, Andrew Akoski and Andrew Holmes, who are both not able to make it either. So next slide. The native student count, we have pretty, been holding pretty steady at about 130-ish students every year. When I made the slideshow, we had 134 students who identified as at least part American Indian, Alaskan Native. And then for our federal funding, which is where we require a form that proves that the, the child, the parent or the grandparent is a member of a tribe. We have typically around 40 forms a year. And that just opened, actually, I've just been getting the emails that that funding has opened for that grant again. We will likely get between 40 to 50 forms back for that federal funding grant as well. And then I've broken down the number of native students we have at each site. So as you could see, obviously RHS and RMS being our only middle and high school, we have quite a few students at both those sites as well as the breakdown with the different elementary schools as well as Central Ed and RCEP. So American Indian Education is primarily funded out of two grants. We have one from the Minnesota Department of Education Office of Indian Education. And that, this year the number is 62,000. That's kind of the same as it's been the last three or four years at this point, I believe. And then our federal funding Title VI grant, that's the one where the student has to have a form filled in that proves either the child, parent or grandparent is an enrolled member of a tribe. And we've been sitting at 42 forms somehow the last couple of years. It's just ended up that way, even as students graduate and new forms come in. And this year I expect it will probably be around the same, around 42 forms, which equals about $10,000 worth of funding from the federal Title VI grant. So I've put up our Minnesota Department of Education Indian Education Program Plan. These are the goals for the plan. This is a like 15-page-long program plan that I write. So this is obviously a very small snippet of that plan. This is just the goals. If you are interested in seeing the program plan in its entirety, entirely, you can entirely, the whole thing, you can always email me and I'm happy to share that with you. The parent committee has to sign off on it as well as Steve. And then Dr. Daniels, who's my supervisor, helps me out with it too. So it's kind of like a big community effort. We kind of divided it into student academic goals and program goals. So the program goals you'll see are kind of more like providing curriculum to schools, are working with our directors of secondary or elementary education to build things like culture trunks or lending libraries. And then that's where I talk about, or I put in my goals of like presenting to classrooms throughout the year. And then for our student academic goals, that's where it gets into like percentages, like we'll have a hundred percent of American Indian high school students graduate each year. Or however many percentages I put down for like taking AP or CIS classes. And again, it's a very lengthy plan and if anyone wants to see it in its entirety, entirely, I'm happy to share it with you. So the big program changes and highlights for this school year is that we're back to in-person events, which is obviously, I know a lot of people are really happy we're back to in-person things. So I have some pictures from, we had a craft night with Jackie Byrd and then she gave a hoop dancing presentation to Sheridan Hills Elementary. We also had an OJBOY printmaker come in for our native students and he did a presentation and then helped them make some art. We also have ongoing drum and dance classes that are held in partnership with the South Metro Indian Education Committee. So basically a bunch of us who are in Indian Ed, we kind of work together and pile our money together so we can hold things like ongoing drum or dance classes or bigger events where native students from multiple districts can get together and get to know each other. And then we also work to plan the South of the River Powwow, which is on May 21st this year and will actually be held because the last two years due to COVID, we were not able to hold that event. Something else that's new and exciting for this year is we had a professional development opportunity with Hennepin County Native educator Allison Waukau on January 28th. So that ended up filling up and that was really cool to see that we had a lot of teachers and other staff that were interested in learning from her. So that was a really good event that we had. The land acknowledgement is another big thing that we've been working on this last year or so. It's been an ongoing collaboration with APAC and Superintendent Unowski. We're working on a plaque for each school site with the land acknowledgement and art by Dakota, Dakota artist Marlena Miles. And her art example is pictured up there of just an example of some of the art that she creates. And a Dakota artist was important as we're on Dakota land. Superintendent Unowski presented the land acknowledgement to the school board back in October. And plaques and other costs that may occur, that those do not come out of Indian education funding. Those are from a different funding source. And the next steps will basically be just finalizing the art and creating the plaques for each building. So I know that the APAC at the last meeting talked about how many buildings would require art and kind of figuring out which like art, because I know we have like RCEP and the District 287 building where we have students. And we talked about having a plaque for those sites as well. And then finally, a requirement from the Minnesota Department of Education's Office of Indian Education is they have to have the parent committee vote on whether or not they believe that the educational offerings by the school district to American Indian students are meeting the needs of American Indian students. And the Richfield APAC issued a vote of concurrence on January 24th. So they basically agree that Richfield is doing what it needs to do for native students at this time. All right. Any questions?
Thank you. We'll, we'll start on, on the right this time. We'll start with Ms. Misha, if we could, questions or comments?
Sure.
So nice to see you, Sarah. Thank you for the presentation. I didn't know that we had chosen an artist and I love that map and I've used that map in classes before.
Oh, really? Cool.
I am so excited. That's wonderful news. I was thinking when, right before a meeting we met with our legislators. And so I don't want to put you on the spot right now, but I'd love to connect with you and think about if there's any legislation that we'd want to advocate for from Richfield. I think, I know that the identification process, for example, at the state level can sometimes limit our funding. So I'd love to just connect with you and certainly if you have any ideas off the top of your head, feel free to share them. But I think there's probably a few things that we could certainly work with our legislators for this year.
Yeah, I'd love to meet and talk with you. So yeah, anytime. Just let me know.
But in general, I'm always absolutely amazed by how far you're able to stretch the budget and all the things you're able to offer within that budget. So thank you so much for your work and your creativity and your partnership with your families. Awesome.
Ms. Banks, questions?
Thank you so much, Sarah. I've always appreciated how much heart you put into this work. It really shows and the students and the families are the ones that benefit from it. The one thing that I noticed was in that slide about the goals. Are you aware of what the proficiencies, where they're at right now versus what your, your stated goal is?
So when I met with the person in the Department of Indian Ed as I was working on our state plan, she said essentially, we don't have reliable data due to, because it's supposed to fall, they look at data from two years past. And she said, let's just start this as a blank slate year and see where it falls now that we have more students actually taking all the standardized tests, whereas these last couple of years have been kind of weird. And she said it will not be accurate data too. So next year, when you watch my presentation, we'll get, we'll get to really see how those goals have fit in and where exactly the percentages are. So.
My other question is, are we going to have 100% graduation rate this year?
We have every other year I've been in Richfield. We have a very, this year I think we have two native seniors that are graduating and both are on track to graduate. So yep, every year I've been here, we've had every native senior graduate on time. So it's usually, it's a very small percentage of students. So this year it's two. I think last year there was two or three maybe. Couple of years ago, there was 10. That was a bigger class. But yeah, it's typically a very small percentage of them that are seniors.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carter?
First, thank you for all the detail. Appreciate all the hard work. You know, were the placards, where are they going?
So we talked about putting them in like this, kind of the entrances of schools. But obviously that's something we will figure out as we, like, you know, make an actual plaque and figure out like size wise and stuff, where it makes the most sense in each building to put it. So that will be coming up in the future.
So not necessarily in a consistent place then?
Yeah, ideally somewhere near the front of the entrance of the building. So.
And again, may not have been visited here, is it will be in all the buildings?
Yes. So that was the goal is all of the buildings. And then we just talked about at our last meeting, including RCEP and District 287 building, since we have Richfield students in there too. So yeah, any place that there's kind of a Richfield Public Schools programming is our goal to get a plaque in each of those sites.
Okay. I think that's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Ms. Cole?
Thank you so much for the presentation. It's always so great to see you do this every year. It's, it's been great to see the progress. You've always been the comparison data from years past, which is, you know, very helpful. And I, I think you've made a very positive difference into not just for the students, but also really getting the families together. And, and, and the way that you all have, you know, joined in support of the kids is just really remarkable and, and really a model to follow. So thank you so very much for your, your, your work on this.
Thank you.
Ms. Brock?
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll repeat some of the same things that I've already been said. I just look forward to this every year because you do such a beautiful job of highlighting the work that you do in the community that you have built and that you help foster with other parents and with other young people and community members. And I was just remembering Paula and I were actually talking to a group of people, it was a couple of weeks ago, who are interested in running for school board in their communities. And one person had a number of questions about American Indian education and how to better advocate, how to have American Indian students in their districts be more seen, be more reflected. And so it was honestly a huge moment of pride for us just to be able to like share a little bit of the work that's happening here and that you specifically have made possible. And to see sort of her like reaction to that and to, to think about what is possible was incredibly rewarding. So I wanted you to know that because it is your work that we were able to hold up and really show as an example of what we believe and what we value as a district. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Helen, questions, comments?
Um, no questions, but thank you for the presentation.
Karina?
No questions as well, but yeah, thank you for the presentation and thank you for what you're doing for our Native American students.
Elsie, questions, comments?
I just want to thank you for the presentation and I hope to see this. Because I really, I don't know why, I just really like, like after I learned about like the Dakotas and we learned about other tribes and like how we're in land that was stolen in 16th grade. I, I taught my mom, I was like, you know, actually I was given, I was like what we learned and I'm like, I was really surprised. And so I really liked this artwork. So I like, oh, I think this is where this place is. This is where it acts like the name. And I really want to thank you for that.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. I, I have nothing new to discuss other than what's been said. Really great, significant appreciation. I love the art. I, I look forward to seeing it displayed. And so thank you again for your presentation.
Great job, Sarah, as always. And the final presentation in the superintendent report, that would be Will Wislow, who's going to talk to us about safe routes to schools and biking even in the wintertime. Take it away, Will.
All right. Is this on? Yeah. Hello, everyone. My name is Will Wislow. Thanks for having me here tonight. During this presentation, I hope, I hope to answer these questions. I'll share a little bit about me as well as provide a brief introduction to Safe Routes to School and how it works. And then I'll share some achievements from the program from the past year and look ahead to the next 12 months or so. Let's begin with me and then we can get on to the interesting stuff. I'm the district's first ever Safe Routes to School Coordinator. I started in December of 2019. And my role is fairly uncommon in a school district. I was hired to complete a grant contract between RPS and the Minnesota Department of Transportation. And personally, I bike all year round and will even be biking home from this meeting. It's about eight miles home. And it's pretty common to see me zooming across Richfield in my high-vis safety vest on school business. Every October, I celebrate my no-car-iversary and this past year was my 13th. However, that may change soon because my wife and I have our first kiddo on the way. We'll see how that goes. So what exactly is Safe Routes to School? In short, it's a federal program designed to encourage families to walk and bike to school. Richfield and RPS have been engaged in Safe Routes to School work since about 2009. The Safe Routes to School framework is built on six strategies that we call the six E's. They're pretty straightforward. Education, encouragement, engineering, which is infrastructure, evaluation, engagement, and equity. So I'm going to dive into some past and future projects in a moment, but first I wanted to give you a quick tour of how these slides are formatted. On the top, you'll see the name of the activity and where it primarily took place. Some relevant details are noted on the right-hand side and below that, the six E categories are also noted. We will start over at Richfield STEM, which is the only RPS school with a safety patrol program. This fall, I worked with coordinator Larry Burgess to grow the program and provide some hands-on training. Almost 50 students volunteered this year, which was very cool. It's about twice as many as have volunteered in recent years. These students help pedestrians cross busy intersections near their school, specifically at the 70th and 12th Avenue intersection. Mr. B hopes to not only make the traffic environment safe. Mr. B hopes to not only make the traffic environment safer during arrival and dismissal, but also to instill values of leadership and responsibility and community connection in his team of students. This past year was also exciting, because we debuted our brand-new Richfield Community Bicycle Fleet that was purchased with funding from the Minnesota Department of Transportation. We got to start rolling it out to schools this fall and visited four buildings. The photo here pictures some high schoolers, we were on a field trip to visit Richfield Lake and to practice using the roundabout infrastructure in Richfield. The bicycle skills classes that we do are based on a curriculum developed by the State of Minnesota and are tailored to different age groups. Okay, in 2020, the district and city partnered on a traffic study of the STEM and RDLS campus. It suggested a number of engineering improvements, and some of them are starting to be implemented now. The biggest suggestion was a major parking lot reconfiguration, but before doing that, we wanted to test out some of the concepts. So this, this fall, we tried out one of them, we tried switching the RDLS lot from a hoop traffic pattern to a loop traffic pattern, and ultimately, the test was kind of a mixed bag at the end of it. Some components of the concept definitely proved to be successful and safe, such as shortening pedestrian crossings at our driveways, but other components were unnecessary or even unsafe, such as requiring right turns out of the parking lot, which caused additional headaches for STEM parents, sorry, STEM parents. Further development is definitely required on this one, but one thing I can confirm for sure from the test is that it's very fun to work with a principal who's dressed as a traffic cone. If you ever get the chance, do it. Another super fun project was working with the administration and students to install some new bicycle parking at Richfield Middle School. Last spring, we engaged those students during their lunch hour to help design a new bike parking area to replace the school's outdated racks, and afterwards, many of the students' suggestions were actually incorporated into the final layout. We installed 42 spaces of great bike parking in approximately 20% of the old footprint, and we were also able to install a bike fix-it station, which you can see on the, the screen there. I should also just note, this project was supported in part with some funding from Bloomington Public Health, which is a great partner in Safe Routes to School work. All right, every year, we host three walking and bicycling encouragement days, one's in October, one's in February, and one is in May, and because each school is different, these events look a little different at every school. Pictured here are a bunch of students from Sheridan Hills Elementary, who got to meet the Sheridan Hills bear during Bike to School Day last May. For me, this was especially cool to, it was especially cool to see 40 bikes locked along the fence that day, because Sheridan Hills is notoriously surrounded by transportation infrastructure that makes it really challenging, really challenging to walk or bike to school. Overall, I've got to say, these are the most fun days to work as a Safe Routes to School Coordinator. And also, this year, we wrapped up a walking promotion grant focused over at Centennial Elementary. It included education and promotion of what are called walking school buses, and concluded with an event called a Bus Stop and Walk, which is pictured. Our morning buses dropped off over at Wilson Pond, which is about three blocks away from Centennial, and students were chaperoned to the front door. I really liked this event, because it was a great way to give everyone at the school a chance to try walking to school, even if they actually live quite far away from the building. So there were plenty of other small events and projects along the way last year, but I wanted to make sure to highlight some of the things we did at every school and from all of the Six Es. All right, we are going to move into the future now. I will share a few plans and ideas for the year ahead, and these ones go just a little bit faster. That bicycle fleet is going to keep visiting our schools, and will try to get the hang of using it at the rest of the buildings and in some other educational contexts. As you can see from this slide, we have a busy calendar, starting the first week of March. In partnership with Richfield Public Works, we've applied for an infrastructure grant to fill a 900-foot-long sidewalk gap on the south side of the STEM and RDLS campus. This will better connect the schools to the neighborhoods and hopefully take some of the pressure off during pickup and drop-off. This is another project that was included in the engineering study that I mentioned earlier. RPS won a small grant from the Aldi grocery store chain to purchase and distribute bike safety equipment, such as helmets, locks, and lights. These giveaways are meant to be kind of pegged to events like Bike to School Day, with the aim of helping families participate, and of course, continue biking safely afterward, even if they can't afford this kind of equipment. Lack of access to safety gear was an issue brought forward by Principal Mahoney at Centennial, which I thought was a very solvable idea. The Richfield Recreation Services Director is really fired up about the idea of building a local bicycle park, such as the one pictured here. I'm helping the project in an advisory capacity. A bike park is a skills course for young kids targeting ages four to 10 or so, and helps them learn handling and maneuvering skills. They're wildly popular among the kids and parents in Minneapolis, and a number of other suburbs right now are pursuing opportunities to convert their underutilized parks amenities to bike park, to bike parks. This, oh, and this concept will be brought to the Richfield Community Services Commission, maybe even as early, even as early as March. Biking to Richfield High School is becoming a very popular activity, the number of students who do has doubled in the past few years, and unfortunately, there's not enough quality bicycle parking to handle everyone, so we applied for another MINDOT grant to purchase and install up to 150 bike parking spaces at RHS, the Central Education Building, some athletic facilities, as well as a couple of other spots. We will probably do another engagement activity like we did at RMS as well. If we're awarded the grant, this will be supplemented with some programming, including great communications and fun group bicycle rides. Last but not least, I'll be working with Richfield Public Works to apply for demonstration project grants, also from MINDOT, in February. Nothing has been decided yet, but we do have a couple of leading project ideas. One would be intersection enhancements, focusing on the pedestrian experience near STEM and RDLS, and the other one would be a separated on-road pedestrian route near Centennial, perhaps like the one pictured here. One parting note, we are celebrating Winter Walking Day on Wednesday, February 23rd. I'll be reaching out to all the directors tomorrow with an official invitation to attend schools who have some additional programming planned, so keep an eye out for that. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Happy to stay for questions and interested in your comments, and of course, you can always reach out to me, email, phone, whatever, it's all good, but otherwise, thanks for having me.
Thank you. We'll check and see if the board has comments or questions they'd like to offer. Mr. Carter, do you want to start us?
Sure do. I think this is all great. Apparently, I need to start, we should have all ridden here tonight.
Some of us.
I think you all live closer than I do, so.
I think we do. You know, one of my questions, and I, I guess I'm kind of curious about this, being new to the board, you know, you mentioned that STEM had the patrol program, none of the other schools do?
That's, that's correct, so typically, safety patrol programs are common at the elementary school level, and I've reached out to all of the principals, and for various reasons, the infrastructure near their schools makes them wary to implement a program like that. So it, it is often school-driven, and STEM is currently the one that really focuses on it, and they do help out a lot there.
Do they just not have walkers at the other schools?
In some cases, yes, so for example, Sheridan Hills, I mentioned the infrastructure challenges near there, there really aren't a ton of walkers near Sheridan Hills, and it, at some of the other schools, for example, Centennial Elementary School has quite a few walkers, in fact, the most walkers of all the elementary schools, but the administration there just does not feel the road conditions are safe enough yet, even to have supervised students working as crossing guards.
But, but it's safe enough to have the students walk?
Well, yes, so the students do walk, they choose to, but to put students in a position of putting down crossing guard flags and that sort of thing, something that they're not comfortable with.
For, for me, then maybe that's something I'd like to see followed, because like, again, there seems to be a contradiction, right? If we think it's safe enough for the students to walk, but not safe enough for the students to patrol, unless their parents are patrolling or teachers are patrolling, it seems like there's a miss. And I guess I'd also just chime in and say, the reason why I'm asking and pushing is like, when, when you put the slide up right away, I thought, my days of being a patrol guard years ago, and how, you know, as a leadership, that's, that's a big thing for the students, right, it's like a big opportunity, and just, you know, if we give more opportunities out there, we're just promoting more leaders, right? So that would be my two cents, I think it's a great program, and I would advocate for it.
Yeah, I also was a crossing guard as a young person, and definitely loved the program, and have been working to make the conditions around our schools safer incrementally, so I, I definitely hope that that's in the cards soon for our other elementary schools.
All right, Ms. Banks-Cupchow?
My daughter is a fifth grader at STEM and is on the safety patrol and loves it. She feels very cool when it's her day. So thank you for your work with Mr. B, because that's, it's an awesome program, and I know the kids love it. My question, I was curious about how many bikes were purchased in that fleet by those MINDOT dollars?
Sure, that's an easy question for me, we purchased exactly 43 bicycles. They are sized for students at kind of all the grade levels, we can accommodate really fourth grade up through our seniors in RHS. There are about 10 bicycles that are essentially adult-sized, the bulk of them are 24-inch bicycles, which are really great for the middle school and late elementary school kids, and a couple that are smaller. We also have three, what I would call adaptive bicycles, we have a recumbent tricycle for students who may not feel comfortable balancing, and we also have two strider bicycles that are suitable for someone who is really in fifth grade up to about, well, really, adults use the bicycles at this size, so.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Mishay?
I feel like I always hear people talk about how awesome you are, and I'm like, okay, I get it. I have not been this excited about crossing guards since like Legionville. So I love that we're making that connection. No, you just have such a clear passion for what you do, and, and it's so contagious, the impact at RHS, like you have the numbers to prove that impact, so thank you, and I also just am blown away by your community partnerships, and I think there's so many opportunities for us to partner with businesses and other organizations, and it takes a lot of legwork to do that, so thank you for making those opportunities happen.
Ms. Brockie, questions, comments?
Yeah, I was also going to just specifically say how great it is to, to see and hear about the increase in bike riders here to the high school, like, I love that, because, you know, as we've had lots of conversations over the years about the, the sort of boundaries for the buses, and then, you know, to, to see more kids who maybe live just within that boundary choosing to ride to school, I think is really exciting. And then the only other thing I was going to say is that I just, I love, as a very dedicated Richfield Public Schools Instagram follower, how many times I see things from your work and your program just lighting up the Instagram feed, because it is like happy, it feels healthy, it feels like such a fun way for people to be making connections and relationships and doing good things, and so it's really fun to see, you do a great job really highlighting what it is that you all are doing and why it matters.
Ms. Cole?
Will, I have to say, I, I'm one of your biggest fans, but I didn't know what you looked like, and I regret not knowing, because I've been giving hugs to people, and I would have said, jokes aside, I am really grateful to, for your work on this, because you're really passionate about it, this, I can tell this is something that you really enjoy doing, and, and you know, when those things can happen together, I think you make sort of a very joyful person, and you certainly are one. I think that where we live in Minnesota, embracing the winter is something I struggle with, and I know that I will do be better at it if I had had an experience to, to really enjoy and see the positive side of things, and I think you're doing that and, and influencing students and families' perception of what can be done, and like the healthy aspects of biking, and not only that, also how great for the environment, and so I just want to say thank you very, very much. Keep up the good work.
Paula, you're always invited to come jump into Lake Harriet with me, speaking of embracing winter in Minnesota, just want to put that out there.
Okay, let's talk.
It's not just Paula, everyone's invited. We should coordinate a ride share for that.
Helen, do you have questions or comments?
No questions, but thank you for the informative presentation and for all the work that you do for our district and community.
Karina?
Just going off of what Helen said, thank you for all that you do, and thank you for teaching safety, but also making it fun for the children as well.
And Elsie?
I was going to say, like, same thing, but I also, I just want to thank you and what the program does, because I remember seeing a bunch of bicycles and there not being enough spaces, that there would just be like some, like bicycles would be piled in, and not like, I'm like, oh, okay, and thank you for hearing out to students about bicycles and not, there not being enough spaces for it, so thank you.
I just want to say thanks as well, I, I really enjoyed the presentation, your enthusiasm is clear, and, and I, I can't, I just want to be there sometime when you explain to some of the kids that you, that you, that you've been car-free for 13 years, and to have them try to wrap their heads around it as, as, as they realize how cold it is outside, so that, that, that sounds really neat, but thank you again, I appreciate it.
Thanks again for having me.
We've absolutely had some fun conversations with Will, when he is biking when it's 100 degrees and when it's 20 degrees below zero, and the enthusiasm turns into performance. As, as Will pointed out, he is one of the very few funded programs in the state, and this is solely grant-funded. Others, Will started with us just before COVID hit, and other districts have struggled to do any form of Safe Routes to Schools during COVID, and Will has just figured out a way to use his enthusiasm to be embraced and to have this program flourish, and we're all amazed by the work that he has done, and we feel like he is a gift to us, and we are glad he's with us, so thank you, Will Wislow.
Thanks again for having me. I'm going to need some constructive criticism later, because there's too much of this, too much of it.
We'll, we'll talk about the burly that you need to, that you'll be shopping for.
All right. Superintendent, commendations, is that correct?
Yes, we have two commendations that came to me via email, one came to me from the Richfield Middle School math team, wanting to commend Frank Berg for 10 years of outstanding volunteer service. January 10th, that week marked the 10-year anniversary of Frank Berg volunteering. He retired from his job as an engineer and reached out to RMS to see if he was able to help students with their math skills. So for the last 10 years, he's worked with six different teachers and mentored more than 100 students. What makes him unique is he also spends extra time working with the teachers to understand the lesson, and then works with students in small groups one day a week for one full class period. So we are proud of Mr. Berg and want to acknowledge him on his 10-year anniversary, and the team is very appreciative of his time, talent, and willingness to work with all of our students to make the middle school students better in their math skills, so congratulations and thank you, Mr. Berg. And then similarly, I received an email about 10th-grade counselor Danielle Jastro, starting, "Good evening, did you ever sit back as a parent and reflect on your day?" And she wanted to share her reflection, that Danielle Jastro has been nothing short of amazing with her daughter, reaching out and supporting mental health issues, navigating registration- registration and classes as an incoming 10th grader, which this year, of course, is very much like the first year of high school. Danielle showed that she loves her job and supported her daughter through many different things across the course of the year. She's done so much for her. She wanted to share that the student and the parent are very appreciative of Danielle, her love for her job, and also supported other families, students falling behind, students trying to balance work, and all this parent could say is, wow, kids have been with her for only four months, she already knows who they are, has an open heart, and they're never going to forgive her. So this parent wants to reflect with gratitude. Thank you to Danielle Jastro, we all see you and we all appreciate you. So thank you, Danielle Jastro, 10th-grade counselor, and congratulations for your work.
All right, thank you. Nice notes there. This brings us to the consent agenda, which is, of course, the, the collection of items that are deemed semi-routine enough to be considered and passed. We consent to pass them without discussion. Before seeking a motion on the consent agenda, I would pause to see if any board member has something on the consent agenda they'd like to remove for further discussion. Hearing none, we could entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Baraki and a second by Ms. Cole. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is approved. We move now to old business, and first up is Policy 451, workload limits for certain special education teachers and administrative guideline.
All right, so we are looking for a board motion, a third and final read of workload for special education teachers. The policy itself really only changes a very small component. Board of Teaching was replaced with Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board. Otherwise, just a review of the language occurred to make sure that it remains aligned to state statute and policy. And then similarly, just some cleaning up of the language within the guidelines, and so we have this after three reads for you tonight, hoping for some action.
All right, thank you. If anyone has any questions, I'll just open it up to the group. Questions or comments on Policy 451 as presented? If there are no, no objections, then we can seek a motion to approve the policy as presented.
I will move to accept the workload limits for special education teachers.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Banks-Cupcho, and a second by Ms. Baraki. Any final comments or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Chair votes aye, and we have approved Policy 451 and guideline 451.1. Next up is school board member code of ethics, Policy 202.
So you will notice updates based on updated language and then also input from board. Language around pupils is being realigned to students systemically, and moving it there to begin with, to make sure that we, we try to put that together. There are times where pupil units is used, and that is a financial methodology, but we're gonna work towards students in general, adding the reminder that the responsibility of school board is governance, not management of the school district, specifically changing language, and then reminding us, we all support the actions of the school board once carried, even if a vote is different. And so even though we all have different perspectives of opinion, we do align as a group. Continuing to clarify that, to focus on education policy as much as possible, setting policy, not necessarily implementing, and then also continuing to delegate details of school board action off to administrative employees. Beyond that, just a couple of slight language changes to realign and, and update, and we, again, we have this for you for a second read, so not asking for passage, just sharing with you all of the language changes and looking for input here or, again, over the next couple of weeks, prior to coming back on February 22nd.
All right, I'll open the floor. As a second read, we've all had a chance to read and make comments and to ensure that they were incorporated. Did anyone read the update and find something they wished to address any further? Okay. If, if, for those of us who've been through MSBA training, there's a lot of redundancy and repetition within this, it is just the, they really hammer it that, that you're just here for policy, you know, we, we don't do anything, is, is how I sometimes describe it. So we're not here to do things, we're here, we're here to make policy and, and ensure that policy is followed, so, but not to actually do the, the carrying out, so. It's a, it's a, it's a good reminder, it's a good board policy, that's why I suggested perhaps it's, it's one that could, we could update its, its review schedule to be every two years, just to make sure that as, as new board members are, your board members start a new term, that, that we review it. We can bring it back for the next meeting, February 22nd, and have our chance then to pass it. Okay? Great. Then we go to Policy 204, board member orientation and development, and it now encompasses previous Policy 205.
Absolutely, and so you'll see that integrated together, and so basically not significant changes, just some formatting changes, and then also, board member development was integrated now in Section 2. And then new board members will note, they received an email as we're working to follow the policy of a survey to review the board member orientation, to make sure that we are actually following the policy and continuing to, to advance our work as we move things forward. So we will again bring this back in two weeks, this is just a review again, and if there's any feedback, we can take that now or over the next couple of weeks, otherwise, we'll bring it back on February 22nd.
All right, open call then for questions or comments to incorporate in Policy 204. Remember, you can always share those directly with the administration outside of the meeting. Okay, great, where are we now? We're on to new business. New business is donations, the shortest new business ever.
Yes, so we have very little new business today. The RMS Music Department received a donation of a trumpet valued at $200 from Kerry Magnuson of Minneapolis, so thank you to Kerry Magnuson of Minneapolis.
All right. Well, with that, I could, we could entertain a motion to accept the donation with gratitude?
I move that we accept this donation with gratitude.
I will second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cole and a second by Ms. Banks-Cupcho. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Chair votes aye, and the donation is accepted with gratitude. All right, we move on now to advanced planning. First up is the legislative update. However, we, prior to this meeting, we had our, our study session in which our legislators and representatives were here with us, either in the room or on our Zoom screen, where we laid up, where we discussed with them our legislative platform, which was passed a few meetings ago, and it gave us some time to chat with them. So other than that, they are about to embark, if they have not already started, on their upcoming legislative session, correct?
Underway.
It's underway?
Yep.
All right. Does anyone have anything further to add on legislative update? They were, they were dizzy with excitement for the, the possibility coming in their, their upcoming session, you could tell. Moving on then, information and questions from the board, does anyone have anything they'd like to, like to share or bring forward at this time? Mr. Carter? Ms. Banks-Cupcho has declined. Ms. Mishak?
I'd like to share that I'll miss the next meeting.
You will miss the next meeting, oh boy.
Yes, I will as well.
Okay, well, this leads me to an immediate follow-up. Will the rest of you be here? Because it puts us into quorum concern, and that's okay, it's not, it's not any individual's fault if we fail to meet quorum, just, it just allows us to prepare, so.
I'm excited to be here on 2/22/22.
It's gonna be electric, I know.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will miss a couple folks, thank you for sharing that. Ms. Baraki, did you have anything you wanted to share? Corinna, did you have anything you'd like to share? Helen? Elsie? Okay, great. Future meeting dates, we just discussed, 2/22/22, 7:00 PM, we have our regular board meeting, for those of us who'll be here, and that is a meeting at which we will have public comment, so if folks who wish to give public comments should sign up in the, in the fashion that is public, publicized on the website. The meeting after that, March 7th, that is a Monday, so 2/22/22 is of course a Tuesday. March 7th is the meeting after that, we have a 6:00 PM study session with the city council, tentative, that would be right here, I believe. And then, following that, we would have our regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Does anyone have any suggested or future agenda items for either of those meetings? All right, well, with that, we have come to the end of this story. It is 8:16 PM, and I will adjourn this regular board meeting of the Richfield School Board. Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.